Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors for October 10, 2023. It's 8:00 a.m. We will be going into closed session. So, Madam Clerk, can you please read the closed session item for us?
Closed session item number one pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiators Shay Johnson and Judy Hawkins regarding the following employee organizations: Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union.
Are there any public comments on this item? Hearing none, we will go to closed session. We had the pledge of allegiance. I'm going to go to the clerk to read out from our closed session and make an announcement.
Our announcement first, please be aware that we are having a little connection issue with our Zoom. So if you would like, please watch, follow the link on our agenda to watch via IQM2 or come into board chambers in person. So in our closed session for today, report out is item one pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiators Shay Johnson and Judy Hawkins regarding the following employee organizations: Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union. Board to action, nor reportable action taken.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will move on to staff announcements, and I will have Stan. You want to be first? And you brought Mark.
Yes, I brought Mark.
Oh, my God.
Good morning, Board. Stan Moore, representing IT. And October is National Cyber Security Awareness Month, and so Mark is our security analyst. And Mark is going to speak a little bit to what we're doing with the, with the program this month. Mark?
Thank you. Hi, Board members. So this month, as Stan said, is National Cyber Security Awareness Month, and the idea is to educate employees and, and staff about being safe, you know, cyber safe. But at the same time, the things that we're trying to push with this are things that can keep, you know, staff safer at home with their banking, credit cards, you know, that type of thing. General public could take the advice on, on this as well as far as how to keep safe. But there's four topics that we're covering this month, and we're pushing out messaging and information more than we usually do to staff on it. The first one being MFA, multi-factor authentication. I just want to say that anywhere that you can do multi-factor, do multi-factor. Your banks, your credit cards. If you've got an account that doesn't require it, but they have it available, jump in there and do it. It's, it's, it's worth it. It can cut down severely on the chances of you being, being hacked. Strong passwords is the other subject. Just making sure you're not using the same password on every site. Use different passwords and make sure that your password's, you know, somewhat long and has some complexity to it. The third week, we'll be going over spotting, phishing, red flags, and that's one that we're, we're hitting on, you know, year round. But we hit on it a little, little harder in October because of the, the National Security Month. But, you know, hovering over links and making sure that it's going where it says it goes, looking at the sender, and even if you recognize the sender, sometimes people's accounts get compromised. So making sure that, you know, if I'm not expecting this PDF from this person or it's unusual, you know, send it off to IT to, to check it out for work-related mail. And if you're at home, just be cautious and maybe contact the person and say, hey, was this, you know, was this something you sent me? Well, no, it wasn't. So just be safe in that sense. And then the last topic for the month is keeping devices up to date. And, you know, for county computers and such, IT pushes out updates. But at home, you know, you'll, you'll get those messages that your, your iPhone or Android is out of date or has security updates. I encourage everyone to do those updates. They usually include not just feature things, but security updates that patch formabilities. And so you're helping prevent the bad guys from being able to, to get into your device. So, and that's really all I have. I just want to encourage everyone to be cyber safe. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks.
Good morning, Supervisors. Just a reminder that tomorrow we begin the study sessions for the zoning code update. It starts at nine o'clock in the morning. We've already sent out several notices. We've been phishing a lot of questions. And I think as we go along through the process, we're going to get more questions. We're trying through media to provide as much information as we can on the zoning code update, so stay tuned. Thank you.
Lisa, by the way, Jennifer, come on up, Jennifer. Lisa, this is going to be.
Good morning, Board. Jennifer Cashy, Director of Integrated Waste Management. Just a quick update or kind of wrap up the free recycling events we had, starting in July, ending in mid-September. We collected 311 mattresses, 1,137 tires, and 608 appliances. So it was quite successful again. And our top hitter was West Point as far as mattresses, 102 mattresses in three hours. But hold tight, Valley Springs with tires, 380 tires in less than three hours. So it was quite successful, and we look forward to having another series of six events should funding continue through Clean California.
It's all, it's always amazing how we have more mattresses than people. How are you?
Good morning, Board. This is Nancy Giddens, Calaveras County Library. I just wanted to invite you on behalf of NASA to the Calaveras County Library on October 21st. I said NASA. We are partnering with NASA to offer Moon Night. Their motto is everyone, everywhere, every year, we celebrate the moon to observe, appreciate, and understand it better. We're going to have a fantastic telescope for you to view the moon and Saturn if you stay long enough through the evening. I will have lots of activities, food, and you can even have your picture taken on the face of the moon if you so choose. So we hope that you will come. You can register online. This is on the county bulletin board, so hopefully you can see that. The QR code is there. You can register there or calaveraslibrary.com. We're featured right on our landing page. Please register by October 16th, so we're sure we have enough food for you. We invite you all to come, 5 to 7, October 21st, and celebrate with us as we are an official viewing site of NASA for the moon that night. Please come.
Thank you. Is there any staff online?
There are no online staff announcements.
All right, Lisa, you're up.
Always have to adjust this microphone. I'm going to go to the moon with Nancy. Good morning, Chair Tofanelli, respective board members, CEO Hitchcock, County Council, and Board Clerk Lisa Medina in Fine River Management Agency. Today I have with me our focus members and some volunteers and staff. On Friday, September 22nd, can everybody see them? I don't want to block the way. Senator Alvarado Gil presented a check in the amount of 200,000 to Animal Services. Our volunteers focus Supervisor Huberty and also Alex Sage Walker were our key points in getting Senator here, which we are internally grateful for. Whoops. Our volunteers and focus members have their, put their hearts and souls into seeing folk and to seeing our animal shelters. Needs are met and operations are current. The funds will be considered towards current operations, which include updating some of our shelter equipment, purchase of a new animal services vehicle for our third animal service officer for field services, and also for communication and equipment for site security. That's something that we truly need. And hopefully, the purchase of livestock housing unit to protect our larger creatures from the elements, which we currently have right now. We seem to have gotten in quite a bit of the larger livestock over the past few years, and we want to continue to support that effort, of course. And October is Adopt a Shelter Dog Month. Everybody know that? There are so many benefits of adopting a dog, and some of them include Sarah. You are saving more than one life. You're giving a deserving animal a second chance at a happy life. You're fighting back against cruel breeding and puppy mills. You're going to receive unconditional love and what could be better. You'll have a reason to stay active. You'll have someone who will never judge you for being a couch potato. You might meet new people. You'll laugh way more than you think, that's for sure. Life will never be boring again, and I know that because I adopted my Charlie from our shelter. You'll have a new best friend. And all those things are so important to us as humans, you know, to be, be human, to feel human, and to feel our souls thrive with animals and kindness and care that we give them. They give it back to us unconditionally. Last announcement, Focus in the Animal Services will have the last free rabies and microchip clinic here this coming weekend on Saturday, October 14th, at the Government Center from 9 to noon. And we welcome everybody here.
We changed it to 11:00.
Oh, they changed it to 11:30. Okay, thank you.
We had too many people, which is cool.
Yeah, it's, it's a good thing because Debbie and I were going through the stats, and I'll announce that probably after this last, this next rabies clinic. But we've vaccinated quite a few animals in Calaveras, and that's what our goal is. But we have these people to thank. Staff, our volunteers, focus members, we couldn't do anything. We couldn't survive. Our operations, our continuity of operations would not be as successful without the support, of course, our board, and of course, our volunteers. They put their hearts and souls into it, countless hours of dedication, and they deserve more than what I can do right now. But hopefully, in the coming future, we'll be able to pay that back and pay it forward. So I just want to thank them. This is about them. This is about staff. This is about our supervisors supporting us. Supervisor Huberty, thank you so much. Now, you were key, vested interest in getting the Senator here, along with Alex Sage Walker. Thank you, Alex. So again, just a dedication to their thoughtfulness and their hours of countless dedication. So, thank you.
Lisa, can I just say one thing?
Of course so.
Our head volunteer, Dolores Ransom, could not be here this morning. She's been there about 14 years, is there almost every day. And the reason she couldn't be here today is she had to go directly from volunteering at the shelter over to volunteer at hospice.
Dolores has been with us, along with some other volunteers, Alex and Debbie, for 20-plus years. Cynthia Pino as well. And they are our leaders in making sure that everything operates smoothly. So again, thank you. Thank you, Alex. Thank you, everybody. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any other staff announcements? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item. Next item is a proclamation from Public Health. This is proclaim October 2023 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Calaveras County. And I will turn this over to Supervisor Follendorf.
Good morning. Hey. Whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month was established in October 1985 to educate women about breast cancer and pay tribute to those who have been affected by the disease. Whereas breast cancer poses a major public health challenge, and whereas breast cancer is the second leading cause, cause of cancer death in women in the United States. And whereas one in eight women and one in 833 men in the United States will develop an invasive breast cancer in their lifetime. It is estimated that over 300,000 people in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer in 2023. And whereas the estimate of 44,230 people this year will die from the disease. And whereas early detection and treatment greatly increase the survival rate of breast cancer. And whereas during Breast Cancer Awareness Month, everyone is encouraged to learn about the risk factor and the importance, importance of early treatment and the fight against breast cancer. Whereas more information on breast cancer is available at cancer.gov or by calling the National Cancer Institute at 1-800-422-6237. And whereas the Center of Disease Control, National Breast and cervical cancer early detection program provides free breast cancer screening to low-income, uninsured, and underinsured women in every state. And whereas increasing public awareness of the value of mammograms and the early detection of treatment of breast cancer can save lives. And with that, I would turn it over to Public Health if there's anyone that is calling.
Good morning, and thank you for making this proclamation. This is a time to honor the many women who have fought breast cancer. 12% of women will face breast cancer in their lifetime, and it's safe to say that every person in this room has been affected by cancer. According to American Cancer Society, when breast cancer is detected early, the five-year survival rate is 99%. Breast Cancer Awareness Month reminds us that we can all help in the fight against breast cancer by spreading awareness about the importance of early detection and treatment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? And I'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion?
So moved, Madam.
Moved by the chairman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by.
Can I just say something for a second?
Yes.
I just wanted to address, I actually would like to acknowledge my grandfather. Technically, he was my step-grandfather, but he was the only grandfather that I knew on my father's side. He was known as the father of nuclear medicine. He was in charge of the medical during Manhattan Project and was the first, was, was in the first group that went into Hiroshima after the bomb. His name was Stafford Warren, and he grew up in Mexico, New Mexico. But he loved this area. And some of my fondest memories of him are, were spending summers in Lake Alpine with my grandparents at their cabin. And the reason why I bring him up today is he invented the mammogram. And I want him to be remembered. He was an amazing man. He was incredibly humble. And yeah, that means a lot that you're doing this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyway, that is pretty cool. Okay, so we have a second by.
Go to the board.
Okay, we have a second by Supervisor Huberty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Therefore, be it resolved, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Calaveras County, passed it and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of Calaveras County today, the 10th of October 2023. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to the next item on the agenda. This is general public comments. Any interested, any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on our agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before 30 minutes allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. So, is there any public comments in the room? No? Seeing none? We'll move on to the next item. It's the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal as an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Is there any board member wish to remove an item? Twelve? Item 12, Jack? Any other board member? Seeing none? Is there any staff member wish to? Yes, Robert?
Good morning. We'd like to remove number 11.
11? Any other staff member? Seeing none? Is there any member of the public wish to pull an item off consent? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. I'm open for a motion for the remainder, minus 11 and 12. Submove, Mr. Trump. Motion by Supervisor Stopper.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Follendorf. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Robert, we're going to start with you. Item number 11, you pulled it. This is an item from Public Works.
Yes, sir. Good morning. This item has three elements to it. One of those elements is the new cooperative agreement for the $14 million financial contribution from the state's SHOP program. That item at this point is going to be, is not needed at this point, given where we're at with the conversations, because the cooperative agreements with the amendments will cover that, that amount of contribution from the state.
So the second item amendment to item, to number one, to the cooperative agreement, 10-035, that is not going to be part of this? We need to take it out of this?
No, sir. It is the new cooperative agreement, 10-0575. That one is not needed as we are moving forward with amendment number one to cooperative agreement 10-0535 for the $14 million.
So it's part three of the agenda item, the third?
Well, we need to get it straight here. So is it two or is it three?
The new cooperative agreement, I think that's item number three.
Three.
That one is not needed because the amendment, the one before.
We, we, when we make the motion for this, it would only be for item one and two.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I want to make that clear.
And the three is the, and I apologize for not having this up in front, but three is the 14 million?
Yes, but, yes, three is.
So we need that agreement before we go to CTC.
What we have is in its place amendment number one to cooperative agreement 10-0535. That's a $14 million amendment. And we had an anticipation of something depending on what the conversation was going to be with the CTC. We put in for the, a new, completely different cooperative agreement. That new, completely different cooperative agreement is not needed.
Okay, so the new, just the amendments are needed?
Just the amendments are needed.
All right. Is there any other board questions or comments? Is there any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. I'm open for a motion on item number with the amendment.
I'll move with the, the changes, the removal for part three.
Motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
A motion by Supervisor Follendorf, second by Supervisor Garandini. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. We move on to item number 12. It's an agreement from Public Works authorized the board chair to execute amendment 01 to an agreement with California Range Land Trust in amount of $47,877 and 40 cents, increasing the not-to-see total of $993,011, $115,000, excuse me, $993,115.95. Sorry. Robert, you have any comments? Jack pulled it, so.
Let me just ask you my questions.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. There's 176 pages to this agreement, so it's very likely I missed some parts to this. And I am not a, nor am I an attorney. Robert, what I'm concerned about is this $47,000 and change, is this an amendment? Is this, is this money for costs that came out of the, the construction of the HM, of the Habitat integration plan? Or is this part of the monitoring that we should be expecting annually?
This is the construction. There's a difference in chain, in, in funding due to what was supposed to be done last year, wasn't done, so it's being done this year. There were some changes in cost, and that's the figure that's reflected here.
Okay, I have two concerns. The first one is, there's no, it's not clear in, in, as I read it, but I think I got it correct. But why are we adding, I mean, this is a contract that went into effect just over a year ago. Did they not anticipate these costs? And in my reading, the contract, there's not a anticipation of cost or change orders. And so it, it appears that they, I want to be, I want you to disprove the fact. It looks to me like they just sent you in a bill for added costs. That's not covered perhaps in the contract. So I'm a little concerned about what we're buying here.
Okay, for the first item, for the first part, when we tried to get these contracts approved by the board, we, by the time we, we got them approved and then construction season was going to start, it was too late for them to do anything. So they couldn't do the work last year. There was a change in cost because they couldn't do the work last year. Some cost escalations, different things happened. And so that's, that's the answer for the small $47,000 amount that we're talking about. But part B of your question is, is a little bit broader question. I think I'm going to need to get Matt here.
Robert, what I'm concerned about on part A is that there's no provision in this contract for change order or any of these things, as I read it. And I'm not seeing a change order. And these guys signed this contract, re-executed his contract in July of 2022, knowing, because we all know, construction season, all those things end October 15th. So they should have been aware of what they were bidding on. So this was the lowest bid we got, and I know it was about 200,000 less than anybody else. What I'm worried about is contractors come in and saying, low bidding it, and then without even the. even a change order, asking for more money. And I, I'm worried about precedent, and now we'll go to part B, which I'll get to next. So, can we just start with, how are they doing this change order under this contract?
Yeah, so the, I'm gonna answer that question, but I wanna back up a little bit, because when we took this item to the board last year in July of twenty twenty-two, there still was adequate time to build the project. There was one other wrinkle in this. There was a supply chain issue, the retention pond, the ponds we had to create this project, we needed clay for that, and that was not readily available. That delay in that then was gonna push us out beyond the October fifteenth date. We had to get all our planting in around that date in order to have success with that. Otherwise, we'd be replacing a lot of plants down the road. And so, a decision was made to push the construction to two thousand twenty-three. It was gonna make a lot more sense. So, just to answer your question, though, on there's no mechanism for that, you are correct, there isn't a specific mechanism in there for change orders. What there was built into the original contract that the board approved, there was a contingency built in there. And so, what this amendment is asking for is essentially to replenish that contingency, because a contingency was used up for essentially bringing the construction to two thousand twenty-three, and we was only allowing for normal things, there's fuel escalation, there's some labor escalation for doing the work in two thousand twenty-three. But essentially, this is replenishing the contingency in the event there are other things that need to happen during construction right now.
So, the work is not completed yet?
It's not completed. We should be complete by the end of October. So, we did get an extension of two weeks by, by Fish and Game to continue working out there.
So, okay, so they couldn't, they had, the contractor had supply chain issues. Why is that our problem as a board? Why is that not the contractor's problem? They made a bid, we have an agreement. I see, as you said, we have no stipulation for this, and we've already spent our contingency, which I didn't see in the budget, but, you know, this is new money, so...
Yeah, I think...
Why is this our problem?
It was a mu, I'm just being fully transparent, it was a mutual decision by the group that it was gonna make more sense to do the construction in two thousand twenty-three, given the issues, given the issue of running up against the timeframe on the permitting, running against timeframe of doing planting during the winter, that we may not have a high success rate of plant survival, which in the end would cost us more money to replace those plants down the road. So, there was a number of issues as a group, we made a decision to push the construction in two thousand twenty-three.
But we signed that agreement. I don't remember us being a part of that conversation.
The, the agreement allowed for a contingency, so we had a forty-seven thousand dollar contingency as part of that. And so, staff, working with our partners on this, we, we worked within that contingency to do that.
Part B of my question is, the Habitat mitigation plan that we've got in place for the next, for five years, correct? And that appears to me, and I could, like I said, a hundred and seventy-six pages, I probably missed it, but it appears that they just send us, we paid, you know, engineering a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to monitor it, we paid Rangeland Trust a hundred and forty thousand dollars to manage this, and we are to expect an, a bill by the end of this year, an additional bill to this forty-seven thousand. And it wasn't clear to me, and then every year after, it wasn't clear to me how they go about evaluating what their costs, it sounds like it's just a timing material contract, and they will just send us what they feel is appropriate. That seems pretty loose. Am I reading that wrong?
You're, you're not reading entirely wrong. What, it was set up this way intentionally. Rangeland Trust is a nonprofit, they're not set up to handle the cash flow of a construction project like this. So, the, the contract was set up in a way that we fronted the amount upfront of the first season money to ensure that the cash flow, there was no issues of paying the contractor and keeping the project moving. It was set up also in the contract, as you mentioned, that every year in October, Rangeland Trust will provide the county an estimate of the expenses of the following year for the monitoring and such. And those costs were outlined in the contract, year up to year five, and so that, that amount the county will pay every year. There will be a full accounting if that money's not used, if the contingency's not used, and money's not used, that money comes back to the county.
So, we should expect an additional bill in addition to this forty-seven thousand shortly?
It's true, but it's not additional money. That money is the money that was approved as part of the original agreement with the board last year in July.
Is it funded?
It is funded.
Okay. Is there any way that we could tighten up this contract? This is, I mean, I know that Caltrans wrote it, but, I mean, you've read it, I've read it, County Council's read it, I mean, this is pretty, pretty loose.
So, I mean, the, you read the contract. The contract allows for changes, it'll have to be agreed to by both parties. So, we could certainly work offline with you or whoever on the board would like to have input, and we can try to make some language changes to that, and, and work with our partner Rangeland Trust to see if they'd agree to that.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see the accounting on where the additional forty-seven thousand came from, and I, I would like you to convey to the contractor that, deal's a deal. Prices went up for everybody, but not everybody just gets to willy-nilly submit change orders on your own. I mean, I guess it's not willy-nilly, you guys negotiated this. So, I would like to see this broken down, I'm not gonna hold up this item, but, but I, I think that this was a, I think it's a poorly written contract, and I'd really like to see how we could tighten it up, because in my reading of it, we could get a pretty fat bill down the road that we don't have the money set aside for. I think that's a possibility. So, I'm worried about those unanticipated costs.
Understood.
Nothing against Habitat mitigation, there's just, no one gets a free check, except for maybe these guys.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Yeah, follow-up. You know, originally, there's a forty-seven thousand dollar contingency in there, and that's, that's four, like, issues that come up. So, that's above what the contract price was. Now, we're, now we're backfilling it, because that was drawn, so now we have another forty-seven, so we're looking at ninety-four thousand dollars on top of this contract. That, that said, he said, it came through in June of twenty twenty-two, and then we got, you know, and then after we approve it as a board, he said you all sat down, and you're like, well, you know, the permitting, so we put through a contract in June that you decided offline to say, hey, let's kick it, let's punt it until next year, without bringing it to the board. I mean, why did we approve it in June when we could've taken another bid based on the reality of what cost could be in twenty twenty-three? I mean, it's, it, we're chasing the ball in, in this situation continually, and, and that's disconcerting, because I, I see a forty-seven thousand dollar ask here, it's really gonna turn out to be ninety-four, because we're doubling on the contingencies. That's, that's all. Thank you for bringing this up, Mr. Garamidius.
I don't know what to do about it, I just would like to do better next time.
Any other comments?
No, sir.
I have one comment. You said, we fronted money, we paid money out before any work was even done, and now we're trying to have some type of accounting of that money? How many, I'd like to have a contract like that, I'm a contractor, I'd love to have a contract where you pay me the money, and then, I mean, how, how did we get in a position that we fronted money out before any work was done to be billed for?
We, we didn't front, we fronted money to California Rangeland Trust. We understood, they did not front the money to the contractor, but in order to ensure that they had cash flow to pay the contractor, they're not set up to do a larger construction project like this. And so, it was going to be an issue of the timing of monthly invoices coming into the county, having to turn around those invoices, and that's where the agreement was set up to ensure that the cash flow was correct for that first season, where we knew a majority of the construction was gonna occur over the first four or five months.
How much money did we front them?
Offhand, I don't have the exact number, but it was approximately six hundred plus thousand.
Amazing. That count is unbelievable to me, that we would have somebody in that position that couldn't manage it without having money fronted to them. Did, before they pay the contractor, did they submit the bill to us for approval? Or do we see, how, how are we accounting for it? That, it just doesn't make sense to me. It, it's our contract, and we're using them, but when a bill is submitted by the contractor, they're the only ones scrutinizing it and agreeing to pay it?
That's correct.
We're, we're completely out of it.
Yeah, October, every year, per the agreement, October, every year, they are to provide an accounting of the previous year's expenses, and in addition, if there's any money left over, or the additional money that's needed for the following year for the monitoring.
Jack, your lights on?
I'm sorry.
Is there any public comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. I'm open for a motion.
I move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion by Supervisor Follendorf, and second by Supervisor Hubbard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Passes five zero. We're gonna take, we're gonna take a five-minute break. All right, we are back, and we're gonna go on to the regular agenda. Item number fourteen is a resolution from Human Resources to adopt a resolution approving a, one, a side letter with the Calaveras Management Union, providing assignment pay and emergency on-call for specific positions assigned to the CPS division, and two, a salary increase for the Deputy Director of Social Services. Judy, is this you?
Yes, good morning, Chair Tofanelli, members of the board, Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management. And we are seeing a very serious vacancy rate within our CPS division of human services, or, sorry, social services. And we are trying to bring forward first the emergency on-call pay, because our supervising, our social services supervisors are having to take on duties they don't typically do, which is being called out, being on-call to take those emergency calls. And so, in light of these additional duties, we are wanting to pay a weekly amount of two fifty, so they're placed on-call for that week, and to help take, relieve the stress on our social workers. Our social workers are working an insane amount of overtime due to the vacancy rate, and so this will help relieve that issue. Also, CPS is a very specialized area within social services, and so we are asking to, for the five percent assignment pay for those supervisors and the program managers who are assigned to CPS due to the increased liability, the additional knowledge that it takes to work in that area. We are seeing a very high burnout rate within CPS, and so we are trying to do what we can to recruit and retain. And then, while we were reviewing all of this, we did find that our Deputy Director of Social Services, we're trying to bring her in line with the other deputy directors within HHSA, and so this just puts her at the rate of the other deputy directors within the agency. And so, I do have Cory here that can also speak to the urgency of the on-call pay as well as the assignment pay.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Cory Ellen. I really wanted to speak to this subject specifically because there are reasons when we're looking at particular positions, as Judy just talked about, and I wanna make sure that we articulate that these decisions are data-driven. And I wanna thank, you know, the CEO's office, the whole team, the HR team, for really doing their due diligence to look into positions like this. We want to ensure the work of public safety, and these vacancy rates really impact our ability to mitigate and protect against imminent risk of harm. I'm sensitive to the current climate emanating from a longstanding compensation discussion. I wanna do my part to advocate for your staff and the residents of Calaveras so that these mandated services that preserve life can be managed to the very best, and that we can meet the, the mission of the Health and Human Services Agency. The staff is tireless in meeting this mission. We are moving towards the highly anticipated compensation classification study, to which I'm grateful, very grateful. I know it's a heavy lift, but it opens up that question at every turn, what's in it for me? And that's what staff around this county right now are asking themselves, and so I just wanted to say, we will follow where the data drives. And right now, with a forty percent vacancy rate, fifty percent, when we factor in long-term leaves, it makes it absolutely impossible to really make sure the, the very risks are mitigated. And it's a mandated program, both federal and state mandate, that we work twenty-four seven, we respond immediately in certain cases in order to sure, ensure children are safe. So, there, there are three factors that are looked at when it comes to people remaining in the workplace, so retention. The first one is supervisor relationships with staff, that they're positive, workplace culture and climate, and a living wage that's anchored to the complexities and risks of the job. And in child welfare services or child protection services, we've fully vetted those two first items over the last two years, using a consultant that came in and evaluated, is our culture and climate the reason for retention, or is it something more? And we have constant data streams that are coming from the work that's been done in that unit, that is showing that burnout continues to be high, and that happens when your caseloads are doubled, when people leave the job. So, you can see, it's a prophecy that just keeps happening in a cyclical way. So, with that, I just wanted to thank you for taking the time to listen to this. It's important that we stop the bleed, and I recognize this is just one small bite of a very large elephant in the room, but I'm here to make sure that we serve this community well, and I wanna thank you for the consideration on this.
Thank you, Cory.
I do have one other thing to add. So, the emergency on-call pay, this will not take any hours away from the social workers. The social workers will have the first option of working on-call, but this is to help alleviate the, the amount of hours that they're working, and so that they can have some type of work-life balance. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Is there any board questions? Is there any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board, open for a motion.
Move.
A motion by Supervisor Follendorf.
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Hubbard, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Move on to the last item on our agenda, well, next to the last item on the agenda, item number fifteen. It's a resolution from Human Resources to adopt a resolution approving a side letter with Service Employees International Union Local ten twenty-one, provide assignment pay for specific positions assigned to the Child Protective Services Division. Judy Hawkins.
Thank you, Chair Tofanelli, members of the board, Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management, and this item goes hand in hand with the previous item, where we are seeing almost a fifty percent vacancy rate within our CPS social workers. We are down forty percent in the two long, long-term leaves, which seven, we have seven, eight vacancies within fifteen of the CPS workers. And so, we did look around, we looked at the salaries, our salaries are in line or slightly above those counties around us, but one of the items that Toowalamie, some other counties are providing is an assignment pay for working CPS. And so, we are asking for a five percent assignment pay for those social workers who are assigned to the CPS division.
Any board questions? Supervisor Hubbard, your lights on?
Sorry.
None? Is there any public comments on this item?
Do you have anything I see wanna add?
Everything remains, what, I'm not saying again.
Okay. So, I'll bring it back to the board, I'm open for a motion.
Move.
Motion by Supervisor Follendorf, second by Supervisor Hubbard, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to the final item on our agenda, this is... Now we'll move on to the final item on our agenda. This is supervisor's announcements. In compliance with Government Code five three two three two point three D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency, and may make other announcements or report out. Start with Supervisor Hubbard.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, on the fourth, I attended the EPOC meeting, which is the Ebbets Pass Property Owners Council. On the fifth, I toured the South Grove and the preparation that's being done for the thirteen-hundred acre burn. Uh, it was an all-day, uh, tour, and I just wanted to mention that Dr. Kristen Sheev, uh, from UC Berkeley, Tony Caprio, and Dr. Christie Brigham from, uh, Sequoia and Kings Canyon National Park, uh, were the, the scientists that were there that had looked at the preparation and were, were, um, approved of, of the work that had been done. And then on the sixth, I attended the, uh, East Bay, East Bay Mud, I always do that wrong, East Bay Mud Barbecue. Supervisor Garamidius.
That it?
That's it.
All right, we will move on to Supervisor Stoppa. You watched our water flow out of the county? You watched our water flow out of the county? Okay. From high above?
That cost us.
All right, Supervisor Garamidius.
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, uh, I, I've appreciated working with you and Supervisor Follendorf and staff for the last couple of weeks on CTC stuff and working wagon trail, getting more immersed in that. Uh, it's been a good education, and I thank you guys very much for the opportunity. I attended the, um, uh, UMR meeting as well, uh, that picnic, which was great, and, uh, CEO Hitchcock was there and, 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 um, several of our directors from the county as well, and we did have a nice meal, and it was a good time and a great opportunity to network with people up and down the river, on both sides of the river, and below and above. So that was great. Um, what else do I have to report out? And we had lumberjack days on seven, on the seventh, and everything went well. So, uh, another successful lumberjack days behind us, and that's all I have to report.
Supervisor Follendorf, did you attend any meetings?
Yes, I did. I attended the COG and the CPA meeting with you. I think you were there, too. Do you remember?
Yes, I remember. I was thinking of another meeting, but.
Oh, no. I didn't report it out last week. Yeah, okay. Um, so going back to the COG and the CPA, um, meeting, um, I attended that with the chairman, um, and on our agenda, we approved, um, for both agencies, um, it is to support the CPA. Uh, we purchased approximately three acres over at the old airport. Um, and so over the next, what, five years, we're transitioning over to, um, having, uh, a new CPA shop where the buses, um, the electrical vehicles will be housed. Um, uh, one of the biggest factors of that is, um, we were in a massive road block with the state and federal funds, um, not able to, um, get our electrical vehicles up, off the ground, because we did not have a, believe, a forty-year lease. Um, and so that, um, restricted us from, um, applying and expanding our fleet for the CPA. Um, and for those of you that don't know what CPA, CPA, the Calaveras turned it up already. Um, so, um, we're really excited about that, and we're going to be, um, starting the process of, um, building a new facility, um, to cater to those things. So, um, and then, um, from my last meeting, um, from the last meeting, when I reported out that, uh, Supervisor Stoppa and I had attended the acting meeting, um, we are still, um, working on that with that, and I'm hoping that we'll get on the agenda in the near future, once, um, staff has their arms more around that, and we can have a lighter discussion with the board as an entirety. Um, but there is a lot of, um, background going on with, um, staff, and they are doing a really good job at moving this for us on behalf of the board.
As I did, I tend the COG meeting with Supervisor Follendorf, who's chair of that, uh, committee, and, um, that moved the three acres that we purchased over off the old airport down, down the street here. Um, that will be a multi-complex. It will house the COG. We will have the COG building there, too, and our, and we, once it's built and everything's ready to go, we move in there. Um, we, we currently meet here in this boardroom, but there's scheduled to have a new boardroom built there, so we'll be meeting there, along again with the bus, uh, CPA and bus services building. Um, it should be a very nice, complex, modern, new, when we get it completed. Um, also, I attended the CTC meeting with Jack. Uh, we toured Rag and Trail with one of the, the vice-chair of CTC. Um, and then we had another meeting the next day in Public Works with a number of the CTC people and staff there on Zoom. Um, it went very well. Uh, we will be going on the eighteenth, uh, to Madera to, um, attend that meeting. This is focusing on the fourteen million dollars we need to finish phase one of the wagon trail. Hopefully, everything goes well there, and we come back with good news. And with that, I'll ask CEO, Ms. Hitchcock, do you have anything to report out? No? County Council, you were gone for a week, so you probably don't have anything.
Oh, I have nothing to report.
All right, with that, we will be adjourned.